Okay, it's 5:30. We'll go ahead and begin. We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, September 9th, 2021. We are virtual this evening and appreciate everyone's patience with this, with this process. Sometimes it's imperfect, but it's what we have to be doing right now. For members of the public who wish to address the council at this meeting, there is a comments section or where there are comment sections or during public, public hearings. You can select the Q and A and enter your name and address and item you'd like to comment on. The city clerk will allow you to join the meeting and be able to address the council at that time. Please join, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. Please be seated. May we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Abu Asli?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Goodelia?
Here.
Mr. Sternan?
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. First on our agenda, we have two proclamations. The first proclamation is for the 15th Annual Five Seasons Stand Down Day, which is September 10th, 2021. And do we have anyone here, anyone joining this meeting for this proclamation? I believe that Mr. Stettler had planned to join us. Are you with us, Joe?
I don't see him on the call or on the meeting.
All right, we'll go ahead and read the proclamation and city clerk will deliver the proclamation to Mr. Stettler. Whereas Valor Inc. in partnership with the Cedar Rapids Metro Area Veterans Council, the Iowa City VA Medical Center and the Lynn County Continuum of Care will hold Lynn County's 15th Annual Stand Down for homeless and near homeless veterans and non-veterans. And whereas Stand Down is a term used in times of war in which exhausted combat units come off the battlefield to rest and recover in a place of safety. And whereas according to the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs, the first Stand Down was organized in 1988 by a group of Vietnam veterans in San Diego. And whereas today's Stand Down also refers to a community-based program that assists homeless and near homeless veterans to transition to community living by providing access to human service agencies, including benefits counseling, social security, and veterans counseling, employment and training assistance, eye exam screenings, healthcare screenings, house, housing services, legal assistance, mental health treatment, and substance abuse counseling. And whereas Stand Down have been used as an effective tool in reaching out to homeless veterans nationally, reaching more than 200,000 veterans and their family members. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abu Asli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September 10th, 2021 as the 15th Annual Five Seasons Stand Down Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impacts of this event to assist veterans and to express gratitude to those who have served and continue to serve.
Mayor, we do have Scott phones with the Valor Board here to accept that proclamation.
Oh, okay. Scott, welcome. Would you like to say anything?
I just wanted to say thank you very much to you, Mayor Abu Asli, and the Marion City Council on behalf of the Valor Board and the Stand Down. We appreciate your recognition and we appreciate all the support for veterans that you offer every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And the city clerk will, she has the signed official proclamation and she'll forward that on to you. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, our second proclamation this evening is for National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is September 15th through October 15th of each year and including this year. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is an official national celebration of Hispanic and Latino heritage in America. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the rich cultural traditions and honor the positive achievements of the Hispanic and Latino-American community, community in our nation, state, and city. Whereas Hispanics and Latinos are the largest ethnic minority group in the United States and contribute to our nation in important ways, including in business, industry, government, agriculture, education, the sciences, the arts, the armed forces, and community service. And whereas Marion residents of Hispanic and Latino ancestry are part of a rich and diverse cultural fabric in our city and share the same dreams, values, common goals, and love of community with all other residents. And whereas Marion residents of Hispanic and Latino ancestry are contributing to shaping a bright future for our city and helping to make it the best place to live, raise a family, and grow a business. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abu Asli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2021 as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Marion and encourage all residents to embrace and celebrate diversity in our community, including the Hispanic and Latino heritage and the many positive achievements and contributions of Hispanics and Latinos to our city, state, and nation. And I believe we have Brett Nellis from the Marion Civil Rights Commission with us. Is Brett here? Rachel?
I don't see him on this meeting.
Okay. Well, we can deliver this proclamation to the Civil Rights Commission and if he does join us, we can always take a break and have him address the council. Okay? All right, so moving on with the remainder of our agenda. The first item is a public forum, which is a section that is set aside for comments from the public on topics that are listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. If any members of the public have a comment regarding items that are associated with the public hearing, there'll be special time to address the council during those sections. So at this time, do we have anyone who has asked to address the council on any item that's on the agenda but not part of a public hearing?
I'm not seeing anybody wishing to speak during this section.
Okay. If anyone does ask to speak, please, please let me know. We'll move on with the consent agenda. Has, has Mr. Sternad joined us? No? Okay.
Mayor, I'd be happy to read Randy's items.
Please go ahead.
Mayor, I moved to approve the consent agenda, including items A1 through G1 and resolutions 29846 through 29887.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through G1 with resolutions 29846 through 29887. Any discussion? Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so assuming there are no, there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next section, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor for ten. Oh, I, yeah, Mayor Protem, go ahead, call it.
Okay, Councilman Harper?
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem, I move to approve items E1 through F1, resolutions 29888 through 29896.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's extension. Items E1 through F1, resolutions 29888 through 29896. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes with one abstention.
And will you handle the next item also?
You bet. Okay, it looks like we've got a public hearing on a development agreement with Medco Holding Company LLC authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. Do we have somebody here to give a little bit of information on that? Is that you, Amal?
Yes, it's me, Your Honor. So the city uses tax increment financing to support economic development efforts. This hearing is for an agreement with Medco Holding Company to complete an infrastructure project, setting up the Marion Enterprise Center to invite additional commercial development. Action is consistent with our economic development policy and with our TIF strategy. Approval of this agreement will authorize making, the city making eight payments, eight semi-annual payments not to exceed 600,000 and subject to annual appropriations.
Great, thank you, Amal. Do we have anybody with us, Rachel, that would like to speak regarding this public hearing?
I have not received any comments and I'm not seeing anybody wishing to speak right now.
Okay. Amal, have we heard anybody, anything from anybody through your channels?
I have not, Your Honor.
Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing and pass it over to Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number 29897, approving development agreement with Medco Holding Company LLC authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to payment of the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 29897, approving development agreement with Medco Holding Company LLC authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion's approved with one abstention. I'll pass the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 29898, approving fiscal year 2021 to 2022 operating budget transfer.
Second. They've moved in second to approve resolution number 29898, approving fiscal year 2021 through 2022 operating budget transfer. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. This time we have a public comment period regarding no parking on REC Drive. So we just opened the public comment period. Do we need, do we need an explanation of this? Rachel or Tara? For the public?
You can.
Says that, Mike?
Yes.
Yep. So this is a request that actually came from Lynn County REC to request one side, no parking. The North Side Tac did look at it and that is the recommendation coming out of Tac is to add no parking to the North Side of REC Drive from 13 to the west and this would include the area that eventually will get built north of Involta. There's a tac report in the packet and it has to the adjacent property owners.
Okay, so the public comment period is now open. Have we received any comments or has anyone asked to address the council?
I received two comments in advance of the meeting and those have been emailed to council. First one's from Robert Berger with Eight's Enough. He had some additional suggestions for parking in that area. And then another comment received by Jim Wright with the Money Light LLC with also some suggestions for parking in the area. And I don't see anybody on the Zoom call wishing to speak.
Okay. So this is going to get referred to the Traffic Advisory Committee for consideration and a recommendation. Is that correct, Mike?
No, so this is the recommendation coming back to city council.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, because we have the item here. Okay. Okay, so we'll have to close the public comment period then. If there's no comments from the public, we'll move on to item E2.
Okay, Your Honor, I move to receive and file the tac report regarding a no parking request. This is Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative at 5695 REC Drive.
Okay. Okay, so it's been moved in second to receive and file the Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding no parking request. Discussion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Go ahead. Question for Mike. I think about, you know, the one comment that we received was should the no parking be on the north side of the street or the south side of the street? And did Tac consider no parking on the south side of the street? Because if REC is asking for this, all their trucks and driveways are going to be on the south side. So is there a difference between the north and the south side, no parking?
Yeah, so as detailed in the tac report, there's two driveways on the north side and you can see it in this image. There's three on the south side. Eventually, there will be an additional access point once that development finishes on the north. So it'll be the same number of driveways on the north and south.
Okay.
Cars are also on the north side, so we're trying to make the most parking available out there. Technically, if this street was built today, there'd be no parking on either side.
And that may happen in the future.
Very well could be.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any other discussion? Okay, so this is the motion to receive and file. All those in favor of receiving and filing the tac report, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 29899, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on the north side of REC Drive from Highway 13, 1,000 foot westerly.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 29899, approving the establishment of a no parking zone on the north side of REC Drive from Highway 13 to 1,000 feet westerly of that location. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number 29899? Please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Okay, motion is approved. This time we have another public comment period for regarding pedestrian access to Toby Park. Quick recap, Mike?
Yeah, so this is a petition that we got regarding the fact that there's no sidewalk on the west side of 31st along Toby Park. The recommendations from the petition were to install a sidewalk on the west side to add a crosswalk with a lighted beacon and additional signage. Tac came back with the recommendation of two sidewalk projects. One would be a shorter sidewalk that would be along Toby Park there and then a longer project to connect all of the gaps along the west side of 31st. So this would just be creating project sheets that then would go into the CIP to get ranked against all the other needs and wants of the city to eventually be prioritized.
Okay. So at this time, we have the opportunity for public comment on this measure. I know we've received several email communications which have been shared with the council. Rachel, do you want to recap those?
Yes, first one is from Jack and Barbara Mulligan at 2250 31st Street. They offered additional suggestions for that area. Next comment is from Michael and Ruth Wagner at 3098 23rd Avenue. They spoke against the measure. Brenda Kelly at 2277 31st Street offered additional suggestions for the area. And then Andrea Earths at 3090 McGowan Boulevard shared concerns with the potential cost of the project. And I don't see anybody on the Zoom call wishing to speak.
Okay. We'll just wait a few seconds here. All right, we'll go ahead and proceed with the motion.
Hey, Your Honor. I move to receive and file the tac report regarding a request to look at the pedestrian access to Toby Park. This was initiated by June Reeves, 2019, 31st Street.
So moved in second to receive and file the tac report regarding a request to look at the pedestrian access to Toby Park. Discussion. This is regarding receiving and filing the report.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mike, could you inform us again, remind us what the financial impact would be on the homeowners if we added sidewalk on the west side of 31st Street?
So depending on how we move forward with the sidewalk assessment, if we do an assessment, we charge half the cost of the actual sidewalk. The rest of the improvement such as grading, storm sewer, seating, inspection, administration, all that is borne by the city. Typically, if you look at the total project cost of the actual dollars expended by the city, the homeowners generally pay about 20% of the total project. There has been discussions of going away from the assessment and in that case, there would be no construction costs on the homeowners. It would only be the maintenance. With the smaller project, the portion along Toby Park, that would be 100% the city. So it'd only be the property south of the park and north of the park that actually would have some assessment if that route was taken.
So given your, our history of assessments for a normal-sized lot, what might that financial impact be on the homeowner? That's why I was looking for swag.
Sure, so because they're side yards, they're a little deeper. You know, it could get into the $1,000 range and with that, then there's also financing options. So if it's above $500, it can go on their taxes over 10 years. It is at a higher interest rate of 9%. Or they could pay it all when it's due, but we would do a preliminary assessment calendar that would be issued to them before the project even started. They would have an opportunity to voice their opinion on that. And when the project is done, we would have a final assessment that is based on the actual bid numbers. But there's also state requirements that it can't be higher than what the preliminary assessment was. So say we, we think it's only going to cost $10 a foot and ends up costing $15 a foot because of inflation or something, we can only charge them the $10 a foot.
Oh, if, if this, if this group did not put this petition together, is there any reason that the city would have considered putting the sidewalk in on the west side of 31st Street?
So back when we had the Sidewalk Assessment Committee that met, I don't know that this was on their radar necessarily because there is at least a sidewalk on the east side of 31st. I don't know what would have happened. We haven't had the Sidewalk Assessment Committee for a few years now. Councilman Brandt would have been on that as the council representative, but any of those projects could have been brought forward from that committee to city council. So it could have been, you know, instead of coming to city council right now, it could have been to the Sidewalk Assessment Committee and they could have made it a priority.
Thank you.
Any other? Yes, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, Mike, just continuing along with that inquiry about any potential cost to the homeowner. That would only be decided at such point, it becomes actionable on the CIP.
Correct. At this point, we're just putting it into the queue, assuming it's approved to move forward with the action of the tac recommendation. So it could be something that's done next year or it could be 20 plus years until it actually gets installed. So it's just putting it in the hopper to be evaluated with the criteria that we have for the CIP projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, again, we're voting on whether to receive and file the Traffic Advisory Committee report. Any further discussion? All right, we'll vote all those in favor of the motion to receive and file the report. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to direct staff to submit a project regarding installation of a sidewalk along the west side of 31st Street from 8th to 25th Avenue and McGowan Boulevard to 23rd Avenue to the Capital Improvements Program.
Second.
It has been moved in second to direct staff to submit project regarding installation of sidewalk along west side of 31st Street from 8th to 25th Avenues and McGowan Boulevard to 23rd Avenue to the Capital Improvement Program. Again, this would just place it among the projects that are desired by the city and it would need to be given priority for funding at some point in the future before it actually becomes an actual project. So any discussion on the motion made by Mayor Protem Atkins? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. We have another, we have another public comment period at this time regarding the study of the intersection of Liner Avenue and Highway 151. Recap, Mr. Barklow?
Yes, Your Honor, so this is an improvement to actually add, right now there's a gravel shoulder for northbound to eastbound traffic. And some of those semis do have off-tracking if they don't get slowed down enough. And so this is a request to actually add a turn lane to that scenario. And with that, the eastbound traffic signal And with that, the eastbound traffic signals there would have to be moved farther to the east so that it's outside of the clear zone. And then additional signal head would have to be added to the northbound to add that bulb for that traffic. So again, similar to the action we just had, we are recommending that we create a project sheet that goes into the C I P for ranking. And then when it is prioritized as a top project to get that funding, then it would proceed. This is joint jurisdiction with the D O T, so we would have to get their approval. But the first thing is to get the money to actually build it.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Do we have Any members of the public who have asked to address the council on this measure? I know we've received communication outside of the meeting. Rachel, you want to recap?
Yes, we received one email in advance of the meeting from Mark Weems with Legacy Manufacturing. He spoke in support of the measure. And then we have Nick Glue with Medco on the Zoom call who wishes to speak.
Okay, Mr. Glue.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. First, I want to thank staff for spending some time evaluating the situation from us. That, that I guess ultimately came from us. I think Councilman Draper pointed out well on Tuesday night That the letter that we submitted really comes on behalf of about twenty different property owners and business owners Who really access the industrial area, this being one of the primary access points. This issue was identified through our regular business retention visits that we do as the Economic Development Organization. And identified as kind of a common issue that independently these business owners Brought up over the course of the past, not just year, but several years. I've had very high level conversations With Mr. Barklow about this particular intersection over the last couple of years, and this year we just decided to kind of formalize This particular issue and ultimate request to look at this intersection. I think with, with the recommendation that this be placed in the C I P For kind of continuous evaluation moving forward. My only request in this would be to, to figure out how we can regularly evaluate What I believe is, is a evolving situation, and by evolving, I, I think I mean that in a good way from a development perspective. We continue to have growth out in this particular area. That growth brings more truck traffic that's going not just to businesses and some of our warehouse operations back there. But I believe as we continue to, you know, have, have users like Quick Star, obviously that was built as a truck stop. Eventually, that truck traffic is going to continue to learn that they can use Linear Avenue to access some of those facilities as well. So as this project kind of gets in the queue of the C I P, again, my request is that somehow we figure out how we can regularly evaluate The increase in, in traffic, and I think in some ways that needs to go beyond just You know, evaluating that site visually a couple of times a year or a couple of times during the day. We're happy to support that however we can, but again, This is one of those growing pains, positive growing pain type issues, and we appreciate kind of regular attention to this as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who has asked to address counsel, Ms. Bolander?
I have not received any other comments.
Okay. Then we will proceed to the motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the tack report regarding a study Linear Avenue and highway one fifty one, and this came from.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to receive and file the tack report regarding A study of Linear Avenue and highway one fifty one. A discussion.
Your honor, I did want to mention that Councilmember Sternad is now on the, at the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, council member. Any discussion on, on the motion made by Mr. Jensen? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to receive and file the report, please say I. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion directing staff to submit a turn lane and signal modifications project for the capital improvements program.
Moved in seconded to direct staff to submit a turn lane and signal modifications project To the capital improvements program for Linear Avenue. Discussion. I think what Mr. Glue said is very true, you know, it's a positive Result of, 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 it's a, it's an issue caused by growth. So it's kind of one of the challenges of growth that we need to stay ahead of it and Accommodate it so it doesn't become A negative For our city. So I think this would, this one is very warranted. Any further discussion?
Yes, your honor.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to hi- highlight the comments that Mr. Glue made relative to The potential for increased truck traffic turning right onto Linear Avenue in order to ultimately Access that Quick Star. You know, the word's going to be out on the sneaker net pretty quick amongst truckers that regularly go through that intersection. If they make use of the Quick Star facility, I'm sure that that problem will grow quite quickly. So As that goes on to the C I P, I think that ought to inform our prioritization of that for action sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Other, other comments? Okay, we'll vote all those in favor of the motion to direct staff to submit lane and signal modifications project For this capital improvement program for Linear Avenue. Please say I. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. We have another public comment period at this time regarding a request for additional signage on Lyric Court. Mr. Barklow?
Yes, your honor, so the original request was to add a child at play sign and a no outlet sign and a dead end sign. Tac did take a look at it. There were a few side swipes on the section. Recommendation from Tac is to add a no outlet. It's a W fourteen dash two And not to install children at play signs.
Okay. So the public comment period is now open. Do we have anyone who's asked to address the council? I know we received written Comments outside the meeting.
We received one email in advance of the meeting. It's from Jeffrey Goldman at one One zero Lyric Court, and that was, he offered suggestions for Signage, and I have no one wishing to speak on the meeting tonight.
Okay. And everyone has received and reviewed Mr. Goldman's communication there. So we can bring that up during the discussion on the motion. We'll move on to To the motion to receive and file. Let's get the.
Yes, your honor, I moved to receive, yeah, I moved to receive and file the tack report regarding a request for additional signage On Larik Court, and this is on behalf of Sarah Cooksley at three thirty Larik Court.
Second.
It's been Moved and seconded to receive and file the traffic advisory committee report Regarding the request for additional signage on Larik Court. Discussion on receiving and filing the report. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to receive and file, please say I. All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Here, I moved to direct staff to install a no outlet sign at the intersection of Larik Road and Larik Court.
Okay. Just my, Councilmember Sternad, just to let you know, your voice was very, very faint. I could barely hear The motion, but I did, I did hear it. So it's been moved and seconded To direct staff to install a no outlet sign at the intersection of Larik Court, Larik Road and Larik Court. Discussion. Mike, I just have a question. I was trying to understand the In, in the Is it Mr. Goldman's comments? He had, he was differentiating between the shape of the signs. What's the significance of that?
Um, I believe he was more talking about the arrow and adding confusion to it. From this intersection, you can actually see the cul-de-sac. So again, I, I don't know that it's, it's a huge need to add this Sign, but that's a recommendation that at least it's giving them something. This is how we've installed all of them for all the roads that we've closed along Sixth Avenue. We've just put the no outlet sign up, and it's been working just fine.
Okay. Okay, any discussion on the motion made by Councilmember Sternad?
Your honor.
Yes, go ahead.
Just, just a comment on that notion of a no outlet sign Being installed, I would have to say at the terminal end of Indian Creek Road North of Oak Savannah Court and how infrequently some people and read that no outlet sign. I was, I would certainly be in favor of doing, making that as a recommendation in accord with responding to all of this.
Other comments, observations? Okay, all those in favor of The motion directing staff to install a no outlet sign at the intersection of Larik Road and Larik Court, please say I. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. At this time, I have another public comment period regarding the intersection of South Twelfth Street and F Avenue. I know we received several comments outside of the meeting on this. We'll go ahead, Mike, could do a quick recap?
Yep, so this is an existing four-way intersection. East-west traffic has to yield, north-south traffic does not. What they are asking for the change is take the yield signs down and install stop signs instead. There have been several accidents at this intersection where the incident was failure to yield. And so with that, we are also recommending some increased Patrols from the police department to enforce the signs as well.
Okay, Rachel, would you like to recap the Comments I've received outside the meeting?
Yes. First one is from Carol Allen at thirteen twenty F Avenue. She wrote in support of the measure. Steve and Marcy Van Note at seven ten South Twelfth Street wrote in support. Larry and Judy Westergren at twelve forty F Avenue shared concerns with the intersection. Jamie Bucy at twelve fifteen F Avenue wrote in support. Gary and Sandy Zaleski at seven eighty South Fourteenth Street wrote in support. And Stacy College Skelton at seven seven five South Twelfth Street also wrote in support.
Okay.
I don't see anybody on the Zoom call wishing to speak.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm assuming, Mike, that you don't have other communications from other people outside the meeting. All the, all the communications we received, Rachel has received those and provided them to us.
That's correct.
Okay.
Your honor, I move to receive and file the track tack report regarding The request to install stop, stop signs at the intersection of South Twelfth Street and F Avenue. This is requested by Jamie Bussy twelve fifteen F Avenue.
Moved in second it to receive and file a traffic advisory committee report Regarding the request to install stop signs at the intersection of South Twelfth Street and F Avenue. Discussion. All those in favor of The motion, please signify by saying I. All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two nine nine zero zero Approving a stop sign stopping eastbound traffic on F Avenue at South Twelfth Street and removal of existing yield sign.
Second.
It's removed in second it to Approve resolution number two nine nine zero zero, proving the stop sign Stopping eastbound traffic on F Avenue at South Twelfth Street and removing the existing yield sign. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number two nine nine zero zero, please say I. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
There, I'd like to make a, approve, or I, I moved to approve resolution number two nine nine zero one. Moving a stop sign stopping westbound traffic on F Avenue at South Twelfth Street And removal of the existing yield sign.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve resolution number two nine nine zero one, approving the stop, stop sign Stopping westbound traffic on F Avenue at South Twelfth Street and removing the existing yield sign. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number two nine nine zero one, please say I. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve project calendar regarding the Third Avenue Reconstruction Project. N S I, and that's resolutions two nine zero two, two nine nine zero two through two, two nine nine zero four.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the project calendar for the Third Avenue Reconstruction Project, including resolutions Two nine nine zero two through two nine nine zero four. Discussion? Mr. Barklow, you said that you've heard, I think I saw something from you where you said you've heard from some of the residents with concerns.
Yeah, those are just general, what we like to do before we get the plans out is know if people have disabilities or issues When we do the streets so that we can accommodate them as much as possible. So those are the only type of comments that we receive. So I, I sent the city council the, the Letter that we send out to the citizens so they know what's going on. There'll be additional letters that go out, but just to kind of get everybody on the same page so that everybody knows what's going on. I know Mr. Harper did ask about the P C I value. For this street, it is twenty nine. Normally, we would wait a year or two more until it's a little bit lower. However, in this case, the water department has a lot of water main that's failing. And a portion of our project is actually expanded to include their water main. So as a partnership with them, We do it as part of our project, and then we send them a bill, and they pay for that portion of the project. Rather than them going in and doing just a water main project and replacing half the street and then waiting a couple of years and replacing the other half of the street. We just partner up and get it done. So the P C I is obviously a large Number that we take into account, but there's also utilities and other things that come into play when we select our streets.
So the water department's portion is included in that one point five five million.
Yeah.
It is. Okay, any additional questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion to approve the project calendar for the Third Avenue Reconstruction Project, please say I. All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Your honor, I moved to approve resolution number two nine nine zero five, approving contract and bond with Rachi Construction Company Regarding the Marion Aircom Parks and its gray sewer extension project in the amount of Two hundred ninety eight thousand nine hundred seventy four dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to turn this over to the mayor for Tim, sorry.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two nine nine zero five, approving contract and bond with Rachi Construction Company Regarding the Marion Aircom Park Sanitary Sewer Extension Project in the amount of two hundred ninety eight thousand nine hundred seventy four dollars and twenty cents. Discussion. All those in favor, please say I. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved with one abstention. I'll pass the meeting back to the. The motion is approved with one abstention. I'll pass the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, this is Randy. Can you hear me now?
I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that earlier. I had an adjustment to make. So this will be the motion to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-one approving an update to the official. Marion zoning map for property located within Marion City Council Ward four, which includes precincts eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen. This will be final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-one. Proving an update to the official Marion zoning map for. All property located within the city of Marion Council Ward four, which includes precincts eleven through fourteen. Discussion. And we had several. Tweaks or small changes recently. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-one, please say I.
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. This time we have a public hearing regarding proposed demolition. For property located. Within the Terrace Park Historic District at the address of nine eighty-five eleventh street. Per chapter twenty-nine point zero five of the Marion Code of Ordinances. Who will give us a is this? Mr. Trey Harder, who will give us or I guess Mr. Hockets with us. Okay.
Yep, I'll give a. I'll give a quick, quick little summary here. The applicants are seeking to. Take down a detached garage on the rear of the property highlighted there in the red on the screen. This is a garage that was built right in the nineteen thirties according to the Lynn County Assessor. It was damaged in the August twenty twenty storm. The photographs from the staff report don't quite do it justice. But it's been shifted off the foundation. The roof's pretty bad shape as well. The applicant was really had a tough time finding a contractor willing to take on the job just because they all felt it was a it's really too far gone. So he'd like to remove the garage and as part of the. Being located within the Terrace Park Historic District, it's got to go through the demolition review process. It went to the historic preservation commission meeting last month. They reviewed the request and determined that the garage could be and recommended the garage be torn down. Subject to the owner working with. Folks that may want to reclaim some of it, some of the wood or some of the other items from it to repurpose on their own projects or upcycle it. Like I said, this is a contributing structure to the historic district. Really, just because of its age, it was on the tail. Like I said, the the period of significance of this district. It's from about eighteen seventy to nineteen thirty. And again, the garage has been on the being constructed on the tail end of the period of significance. There's nothing historically significant about the garage or structurally other than its age. Again, the commission did recommend approval for the demolition of the of the. Of the garage. The owner will be. Replacing it with a new one. He did receive approval from the zoning board of adjustment. Last month as well for some reduced setbacks. Pretty similar to what has been approved or what exists in that neighborhood already with a lot of the other garages. For council member Harper, I didn't update my memo, but the. The resolution does reflect the historic preservation commission's action in the in the actual approving resolution. So we did. We did document it that way rather than in the staff report. I believe the applicant is in the is on the on Zoom if he has anything else to add.
Okay, thank you, Dave. At this time, we'll ask for comments from members of the public either in favor or in opposition. And the applicant is welcome to. Participate and speak at this time.
I have not received any comments ahead of time. And I guess if Jeff Lunsman wishes to speak, he can use the raise hand feature. Oh, Terrell, you can unmute him. Jeff, you should be able to speak now.
All right, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. First of all, thank you for taking this under consideration. Dave did a really good job of explaining it. The garage shifted. Left August during the great show. I had a roofing contractor out there who would not even get up on the roof because he said it was unsafe. I basically just want you to tear it down and build something that is safe. That way, if I'm in it, I don't have to worry about it falling down on me.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Lunsman? Okay. Is there anyone else who has asked to address the council on this, Ms. Bolander?
I have not received any other comments.
Okay. All right, then we will close the public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Yes, your honor, I move to approve resolution number two nine nine zero six. Approving a demolition request for property located within the Terrace Park Historic District. At nine eighty-five eleventh street Marion Iowa per chapter twenty-nine point zero five of the Marion Code of Ordinances.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution number two nine nine zero six. Proving demolition request for for. Property located within the Terrace Park Historic District, but the address of nine eighty-five eleventh street. Discussion.
Yes, your honor.
Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, just a comment. Dave, I see that amendment you made in the agenda memo and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number two nine nine zero six, they say I.
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. At this time, we have. A public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic. Do we have anyone who has asked to address the council?
I have not received any comments.
Okay. Just remind. Members of the public also that council members are available outside meetings. To help address issues and to hear comments. On any topic, so. Okay. Then this brings us to the conclusion of the meeting. We'll go with council comments. We'll start with Mr. Jensen.
Yeah, the only comment I'll make. This evening is just that I believe our time by city council. Spent at Toby Park is time very well spent. I'd have to say in the times this summer. And follow that I've been there, we'd have no less than twenty to thirty people stop by. Every Saturday morning. And that far outweighs the numbers that we ever saw. With people stopping by or any questions or comments when we were at the library. So, you know, I would just. Continue to say that I think that's time well spent by all the city council members that. Mark that man the table there. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Atkins.
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Harper.
Yes, I just would concur with Mr. Jensen's comments about the. About the farmer's market experience. I've had many people stop just to chat, get information about various projects. Bring a few concerns to our attention. I think I think that's a great interaction. So I just really endorse those events.
Thank you. Mr. Sternad.
Thank you. I just wanted to apologize to everybody for being tardy. I had a. Previous meeting that ran over and delayed me, so I apologize for that. Otherwise, I have no other comments. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brad.
Nothing tonight.
Okay, and Ms. Goodella.
You're muted, Renee.
Thank you, Rachel. Yeah, I just want to remind everyone it's a really important date coming up. One week from today is the closing of filing for running for public office. School boards, local city councils, I just encourage people to pay attention. Elections are important. And I hope that, you know, we have a really great turnout in terms of voting. I think this is the first time, if I'm not mistaken, that we are doing school board and city elections at the same time. So hopefully that will drive up turnout and people will, you know, pay attention, plug in, be informed. So yeah, one more week till the filing date, then we get to find out who the slate of everybody is. And I just encourage people to take these next several weeks and a couple of months to. Look at issues, determine what you care about, go meet people, come to the things that'll be organized where you can ask questions and hear people speak. This is really important and. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone? I think we got everyone. Okay, for my part, I would echo what's been said about the council. Presence at the at the markets. When we started doing office hours. Well, it'd be. Six years ago now. You know, it was for the purpose of. Making council members going where people are to make ourselves accessible to hear. Comments from people to share information and to. Listen to people and be and be available to 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 meet them, to get to know them and to. Let them know that we're here to help them solve their issues and we're here to to serve them. And I think it I agree, it has been very successful. I encourage. All members of the public to use that and all other ways to reach council members, whether it's by email or a phone call or personal meeting. And also showing up at these. Office hour sessions that we that we. Attend. We'll have to figure out after the markets are done what. What location we're going to use since traditionally we've done them at the library on Saturdays. Outside of the summer months. So well, I'm sure we'll figure out a new location until the new library is open and available. Other than that. I have driven through the new roundabout at tenth and tenth a number of times. I think it works beautifully. I've heard a lot of great comments seen on social media. A lot of positive comments from residents. About how much they appreciate it and are enjoying driving through there. So kudos to everyone. Involved in with that and I think it's it's been received well so far. So. With that, that brings us to the end of the meeting. Appreciate everyone joining us and we'll see you next time. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Night.